Put the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do roll call.
Here.
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 All right, we'll do the public hearing. A coram being present, the first order business to hold a public hearing on the e-learning plan. Due notice has been given of the public hearing on the e-learning plan and all other statutory requirements preliminary to the holding of such public hearing have been compiled with. The e-learning plan was presented for a first read at the September 24, 2019 Committee of the Whole Board Meeting. Dr. Stinkus and Mr. Linquist will present and explain the plan and answer any questions from the board.
At this time, I ask that Ms. Linquist come forward. And I'm going to ask Kylie just to summarize the plan she explained at the last board meeting where there was a first read.
I'm good.
And there were no questions submitted. Again, this is a formality under the new legislation that was approved that we do have to have a public hearing to review our e-learning plan in the event we choose to use e-learning days in place of an emergency day for a school closure or if there's a conflict where we need to hold classes outside the building. Ms. Linquist has done an excellent job putting this together, and so I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Linquist to briefly summarize the e-learning plan that you saw two weeks ago.
Thank you. As I talked about it at the last board meeting, this, as Dr. Stinkus alluded to, is a formality now under the new law that Pritzker signed into effect, Public Act 101-0012, which became effective July 1 of 2019, that requires all districts have a district e-learning plan shared on their website, approved by their Board of Education, shared out with all stakeholders in the event that we choose to use e-learning days in lieu of the five emergency days. The highlights, again, in this plan are all developed in conjunction with the checklist that I was given from our West 40 ROE, from Dr. Mark Klaasner. So this plan was developed with the criteria in mind as it is listed for the state. Some of the finer points that you will see in the plan are how we are going to approach students who do not have access to Wi-Fi and technology because part of the law is that we make resources available for those students. The plan also details how our staff has been trained and what the e-learning expectations are, both for students, general educators, and special educators. This plan was something that we have already put into place last year. As you know, we used two e-learning days in lieu of two emergency days. So we were really ahead of the curve on this because we already had our training modules done. Bridget Wilmot did a great job of putting out videos to help everyone understand how to put a Google link for attendance up, how to share something out on Schoolagie, which is the learning management system that our students will be able to access all of their materials on. Also written into the law is an opportunity for teachers and stakeholders to provide feedback. We were able to meet with students, meet with teachers, meet with parents about our e-learning days last year and have made some tweaks that you'll see in this new plan, such as when students need to check in by, last year it was noon, we moved that up to 11 upon parent request, as well as when students turn in their work. So that is going to be something that they're now turning in the actual day of unless they are students who are impacted by needing to have alternate access to Wi-Fi or alternate access to materials. So again, this plan was developed in conjunction with the ROE, so I have full confidence that when we hear from the ROE about how they're going to approve these plans, because we haven't heard that yet, we are going to be ready with that because we have developed it with the ISB guidelines in mind, with the law sitting right next to me. And when we know what hoops we have to jump through, we want to be able to go ahead and be prepared and have the Board of Education's blessing on the e-learning plan we put forward.
Are there any other questions from the board? Board President Smithing, I think Kylie's, like I stated before, Kylie has done everything that's required. I think we've met all the requirements from the state. The board's had two reads of this, and I'd recommend that the board approve this later in the meeting.
Okay. The meeting will now be open for public discussion, and all persons desiring to be heard will be heard at this time.
So you plus, okay. It's not e-learning anymore.
Yeah, well, this is visitors' comments on e-learning. I'm sorry. We will have a visitor's comment shortly in the public meeting.
Related to e-learning. Okay. Seeing that no for the comments about e-learning from the public, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
The hearing, the public hearing.
I'm sorry, the public hearing.
And a second.
Second.
And?
Durkin.
Durkin. And then all vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Guys have it. So we'll back to?
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting. Information items?
Thank you, Kylie.
FOIA.
There were no FOIA reports submitted this week.
Now visitor statements again. I'm sorry for going out of order and being confused. I have to read the statement though. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of school districts. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." All right.
Hi. My name is Ann Lee. I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of the LaGrange area, and that includes Riverside and Brookfield. We're here to voice our concern about the potential for the dangerous consequences of two Illinois Association of School Board resolutions recommended for adoption at the November IASB conference coming up. We urge the school board to instruct your delegate to vote no on both Resolution 1 and Resolution 3. Resolution 1 would provide local school boards the option to decide if they will allow for properly trained staff to be armed in school buildings. Resolution 3 would establish school safety grants so school districts can hire school resource officers who may carry a firearm, provided training is received. Both of these would serve to bring guns into our schools. Schools should be places of safety. There's no evidence to show that arming personnel within a school increases school safety. These actions are contrary to conclusions in the 2015 New England Journal of Medicine evidence-based, peer-reviewed study, which indicated that more guns do not make communities safer, but rather contribute to the rise in gun-related incidents, suicides and homicides in our country. We cannot risk introducing firearms into our schools. We should be working to keep guns out of our schools. I have a couple of fact sheets. I have one for each of you, which I'll hand out. We ask that you please insist that IASB recommendations be database. The fact sheets cover those peer-reviewed studies that I mentioned just a moment ago. So thank you for your opportunity to submit this comment.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you very much.
I'll just pass out everyone for a quick.
Thank you. And to the school board members, I know there was a question submitted in regards to the resolutions. I think there are several resolutions going to the delegation, delegate assembly that takes place at the school board conference, and Mary Ann is going to send those out electronically if she didn't already today. All right. So those should be sent, were sent out already.
So should I make comment on?
No, we don't, we don't comment.
No, on that practice with the school board, because there was a question.
Yeah, we should add that as a discussion item then, and we can discuss it.
Okay, because there was a question on your list.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that brings us to actually seven additional discussion items, which then we could talk about this.
She would, this is where you, she requests, and then we touch on it at the end of the meeting, right? Or is that additional agenda items, discussion items requested? So once we complete the agenda, then we go and we discuss?
The delegate meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
So she'd like to discuss the delegate meeting.
I'll just, I'll provide some information on the process of the delegate meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion items?
No.
I wanted to give a quick thank you to Hector for a great homecoming week. I got a lot of very positive responses from parents and students and staff about the pep rally and the game and the spirit, pageantry of the whole thing, and the dance, even, you know, some of my kids were like, "The best ever, Dad," and they didn't like much. And the parents' breakfast on Monday, even that was very positive, so I don't know how you had the energy to do that on a Monday morning after homecoming, but anyway, wanted to say thank you.
Consent.
Consent, agenda, action items.
So we do have Kylie and Lindsay Minow from Man, I'm sorry, Lindsay. I'm trying to process a couple of things up here. You gotta give me a minute. So Kylie and Lindsay are here because there were a couple of questions submitted, so before we do the formal vote on consent agenda, I thought they could address a couple of the questions that were submitted.
Can I go ahead and give this to the board so they know what I'm referring to?
Absolutely. Lindsay is our instructional coach for the math department and a math teacher. I can't remember names lately.
You're lucky you remembered mine.
That's going to come back to haunt you, I think, probably.
Yeah, that's going to bite you later. I know it will.
All right, Kylie, go ahead. You can lead this how you want.
Okay, so there weren't any new questions submitted on the proposed new courses for the 2020-21 curriculum guide, but when I was here last time, there were a couple of questions about and understanding the whole STEM math, college algebra piece. So Lindsay put together a document that I will let her explain to you that gives you kind of an idea of which students would be going into each of those classes, so you can tell what that differential is, so that hopefully we don't have any additional questions.
So kind of the change into STEM math and then adding back in college algebra comes from us working with Triton and the other schools that feed into Triton to be in compliance with state mandates for transitional math. So there are three different courses that we could offer, and we opted for the STEM math because we felt like, given our student body, it gave them the most opportunities after they leave here. So if you're looking at the document, the computer science classes, a lot of students double up with those, so they can start taking them their sophomore year. So the students I'm kind of referring to aren't necessarily those students. Some of them will take computer science in addition to these other classes. So the STEM math is meant to be for students that aren't college-ready. So as a department, when we're going through recommendations, we'll be looking at those students, probably pulling from our Algebra II TRIG classes, and looking at, they have to have met their graduation requirement, their three years, and have some kind of stipulations to be deemed not college-ready. And so by participating and successfully completing the STEM math, then they'll place into credit-bearing courses at Triton, and then there is an element of portability so that if they're going to COD or some state schools are going to accept this transitional math credit, if you will, to give them a spot in a credit-bearing course. They're not having to take the dev ed classes that take their time and, you know, a lot of money. And then as we have been kind of working with the content of that class, we are noticing a larger gap between the content in that course and, which is what is currently called our college algebra, and our next level AP is AP stats. So there's a huge gap content-wise. There's a kind of a chunk of students that, for lack of a better word, are not being served appropriately. Like, they're either not challenged at all in this transitional math class, or they're in AP stats and they're in a little bit over their head and not necessarily in an environment that's going to help them with their classes they're taking at the college level. And so we used to have a class that was college algebra, that was written around the equivalent of Math 110 at Triton. It was originally Jeff Geltner and I did it. We taught it for many years. It was successful, but when we kind of partnered with Triton, we went with their curriculum for the dev ed classes, and so it went away. And so we're going to bring that back. We're looking to market with dual credit through Triton, but there are certain stipulations of what students will have to have met. They'll have to have a certain SAT score or place on the Triton test. So we're still kind of working through the logistics with that, and teachers have to be qualified to teach it. So they have to have a master's in math education or math, not just a master's degree. So that limits, we actually have quite a few people in our department, but it does limit who could be teaching the course. And then if you look at the others, AP stats, it is an AP class, but it is also offered dual credit through Loyola, and then we have our two AP calculus classes as well. But so the students that we're referring to generally coming out of Algebra II would be either going into STEM math. That would be the students that are really needing kind of reteaching to really master those skills before they get to a college math class, or kind of the student that's in the middle, that maybe doesn't want to take an AP. They don't love math, but they know, like, hey, I need to be in a math class, would be in college algebra. Hopefully, it'll be dual credit with Triton, and then you'd have the AP stats for those kids. And a lot of those kids also will take a computer science as well at some point.
So ultimately, what we wanted you to see with this, after kind of discussing the two courses in theory, and thank you to Lindsay for helping to put an actual path in place so you can really see the profile of the student that would be going into these two different courses, which is why we feel it's important to have the STEM math, which meets our transitional math requirement, but also bring back that college algebra for those kind of tweener students who really need math but aren't really ready to go up to that AP level. So we were hopeful that this would kind of help the board see the reason for those two courses.
Lindsay, would you be so kind as to add a table to the bottom right corner of this chart?
Mm-hmm.
And if you could just get it to me by Friday, I could put it in the board's Friday update, and it would just, obviously, there's a little message based on student placement scores, but just so they understand, like, year one is either Algebra I, Algebra I honors, John, right?
Yeah. Basically, this is like the first stage of the rest of that.
Some of these courses are available to some students by year three.
Right. Yeah, so like, really, any of our students, even if they're coming out of a regular level Algebra I, can take AP Computer Science Principles their freshman year. So like, a student that's taking, that's coming out of regular level, okay? They do okay, they work hard, they really want to challenge themselves as sophomores. I kind of look at some of those really high-achieving, regular algebra students that just weren't really quite ready for honors as a freshman. Maybe they are staying in regular geometry, but some of those kids will double up, and they'll take geometry with Computer Science Principles their sophomore year. And then some of them, as juniors, will take their Algebra II with Computer Science A. So if they're doing dual credit or they pass those exams, they're already sitting at, you know, two sets of college credits for computer science. And then those students that are, like, really high-achieving in that regular track would take an AP stats, but...
But we have students that take AP calculus, AB and BC as their third and fourth year because they came in as, like, geometry as a freshman, right?
Yeah, so we have students that started in honors, geometry as freshmen, that there's a second test to qualify that, and then go pre-calc, AB, BC.
Yeah, even if you just put something that says year one and then the two or three choices they can take based under place, so then they can kind of align this with the top. That'd be helpful for them.
Yeah, for sure.
And I'll resend it out. Is that okay with the board?
It's good.
So I noticed there was a question in your list about class size. And do we want to add that as a separate discussion?
Yeah, I think, so with the question that was submitted, Kylie, I responded to that board member and said that Kylie is coming back to present at the October call.
Can't get enough of me.
I know, right? You're looking all kinds. At that October call, she's going to have a detailed report of the courses that have been offered, and I think aligned with the question about being offered but not running. And I think that would also bring up the class size.
Okay. Yeah, and I just wanted to add too, because there's so many of our board members who haven't had the history of the class size issue. When the policy was set at 20, that's because there had been a plethora of classes with nine students, 12 students, and it's just costly. So the policy was a general rule 20, minimum of 20. However, any class where there were less than 20 could be brought to the board. Wasn't fixed. And so the board, every year, has entertained a list of classes that, where there were students less than 20. And actually, one year, we had about eight in one of these AP calculuses, A or B, and that was approved because it was necessary to go on. It was a unique situation. So the 20 is not, just, you know, for historical sense, the 20 is not a hard and fast rule. It's just a mechanism for the board to make sure we're not running many classes under 20, if that gives a little context to that class size.
Course fees, were there any questions on course fees?
Course fees, so what, how often do we look at that?
Every year.
Every year?
Yeah, we look every year, specifically because, you know, we do get from time to time, which some of these course fees included books that change cost, or, you know, like the life guard training one, the masks went up. So we ask the instructional coaches to meet with their people every year to really make sure, yes, we're charging what we should be charging for these courses, and, you know, we're not undercutting our fees or not, you know, going too overboard. So it's a yearly process for us.
I did notice that some went down.
Yes, yes, and typically...
And we run these cost-neutral, right? Kylie, this is strictly like, hey, if you're in lifeguarding, you're getting the mask, this and this.
Yes, yes, yeah. You're paying for what you get. Yes, yes.
And Kristen, correct me if I'm wrong, unused dollars collected for course fees, is that going to the general fund at the end of the year?
It does.
Because we shifted all that to the general ledger, I think, last year, right?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to make a point. I thought some went down.
Yeah, some of them did go down. And some of them, you know, the AP Spanish literature went down 30 bucks, so some of them, you know, went down considerable. So that's why we try to do it every year, to really make sure that we're honing in on the right thing and getting what we need and making sure students aren't paying too much.
All right. Good. Any other questions, curriculum guide, course fees, before we approve the consent? I think Kylie had addressed all the stuff that was submitted that I sent you from the board, correct?
Yes, with the exception of that one request that I'll bring back with me next time with my goals.
Right. And Laura, I would ask that you revisit the comment again about the class size, because I think the person, Deanna, asked that question, she couldn't make it tonight.
Okay. And before we vote on the consent, I noticed there was another question on, detail on the minutes.
I spoke to the board members this morning. They did not want any change to the minutes. They were just asking for clarification on Mary Ann's process.
Okay. But, you know, as a board, you know, if we ever thought, if anybody ever thought that there wasn't an offer too much, that would be something that we'd want to bring to the table for discussion, so...
Correct. And she did not want any changes.
Yeah.
Do we, did we get a motion yet, Mary Ann? Okay, I need someone to read a motion for the consent.
Sure. The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on September 10, 19, and 24, 2019, opening close, approves the curriculum guide changes for the 2020-21, 2021 school year, approves the course fees for the 2020-2021 school year as presented in the October 8, 2019 board agenda packet.
Yeah, a second?
Second.
Ms. Yaren. Mary Ann, this will require a roll call because there's money.
Ms. Roska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Kylie. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you. Welcome, Lindsay.
Very much.
See you soon.
Good job, Lindsay.
Aw, thanks.
See you in two weeks.
Yep.
All right. Curriculum guide changes.
Oh, that's all under consent.
Course fees under consent. Old business action item, life safety capital improvement.
No update, we're just in the process. Kristen's working through with Joel, the final closeout documents for the pool project. And so the final pay application is in the board, for the board to approve tonight, and then we're just holding a check till we receive all the closeout documents, but there is no formal action to be taken tonight under that. As stated previously, we have a facilities advisory council meeting on October 21, and we'll start to lay out a plan for the roof work, the final three sections of roof that need to be completed this summer.
All right, e-learning plan?
E-learning plan, the board just went through again, sort of a second time, and through the public hearing, so unless there are any other questions, we can take formal action.
I'm ready.
You ready? Go.
Right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois, approves the e-learning plan for the district as presented in the October 8, 2019 board agenda packet.
A second?
Second.
All right. We need to do a roll call. Is that all?
I think you do it all in favor, I believe.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. New business, payment of bills.
Kristen, there were some questions submitted. Could you please address those for the board?
Yeah, the first question was a general inquiry about supplies. Almost all of the supplies are departmental supplies. The total budget for all supply-related expenses this year is $157,194, and we've roughly spent 44% of that, which makes sense because we often need a lot of supplies to get up and running at the beginning of the school year. There was a question about Title I supplies, and Title I has a lot of restrictions, so we don't really use Title I for supplies, with the exception of Homework Hangout has some supplies associated with that, which is an after-school program to help students complete their homework through the use of peer tutors. On Board Book Page 91, kind of 92, Go Guardian for Admin, which falls under Insight Public Sector, is a license for each new Chromebook. That is good for four years, and the license covers website filtering, monitoring of how students use the Chromebook to alert us for self-harm, violence, et cetera. And then it also allows us to remotely lock down a Chromebook and locate a Chromebook should we need it. Board Book Page 97 and throughout, there was a question about the difference between a sports official and a sports worker. Officials are referees, and that rate is set by IHSA, and workers are contractual rates that are set in our CBA, and those are for a variety of different services depending on the sport. It could be an announcer, it could be a bookkeeper, it could be...
Scoreboard.
Scoreboard.
Security.
Some examples. And for that process, we ask staff that are interested to contact Donna. Sometimes we're begging staff to do it, so, but that rate is set in the contract. Board Book Page 98, there's a question about food for board meetings. In this bills list, there are two charges for food for board meetings. One is a reoccurring charge, which is for snacks in the boardroom, and then the other was for the self-evaluation meeting, which was for pizza. So we can work to put snacks/coffee for the boardroom, because it's not really for the board meeting, but it's for the district conference room. So we will revise that moving forward. Board Book Page 123, there was a question on Riverside Township Lions Club. These are annual dues for Lions Club for Dr. Skinkes's membership, which is covered by his employment contract, and this is an annual expense that we budget for each year. Board Book Page 99, end of 99, beginning on 100, Learn Well. This is for hospital tutoring, for a student who is in a hospital. So the hospital provides that tutor, which is a little different than homebound tutoring, where it's our staff member that goes out to the home or meets a public library or has a student come here after hours. And then Board Book Page 130, the charge for Spotify is for a product called Soundtrap, and so it's the editing software that is used in music classes. We use it for a variety of classes for students to compose music, but then we also use it to record students and their performance and make edits to that as well.
Yeah, Spotify just recently bought them out.
Yes. It used to be some, I can't remember the...
Well, they're a Norwegian company.
Yeah.
Right?
But the music department loves it.
Yes, it's a very good tool.
Yeah, Spotify just recently bought them out.
It used to be some, I can't remember the...
Well, they're a Norwegian company, right?
But the music department loves it.
Yes, it's a very good tool.
And that was it for questions and...
Any other questions on the bills for Kristen? Okay, Wes?
All right.
Motion?
Motion, right?
Oh, sorry. Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the October 8, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Wait a second.
Second.
All right, we'll have to do a roll call on that one.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Eska?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Annual financial report, fiscal year 2019, first read.
Kristen submitted this for the board for a first read. There is one question submitted, but it was to ask for the auditor to summarize one of his comments on the initial opening memo. The auditor will be present at the Cow meeting, Kristen, to discuss the audit in detail. We did not receive any other questions. Kristen, is there anything that you need to highlight? Or are you good till the next meeting?
No, I'm good.
Swedish, they're Swedish.
All right. Seeing there's no other questions and matters for a closed session. Personnel, student discipline, sale, lease or lease of property, pending intimate litigation, collective negotiation, school safety. Another opportunity for visitor statements. Seeing there's no persons there, won't have to read that. Discussion items requested, this is...
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So the way the delegate meeting works, and we have some new board members, and maybe I'll give Deanna a call. You'll each get a packet. Every school board in the state of Illinois has the opportunity to write a resolution and send it to the Illinois Association of School Boards. And you have to do your homework on it and follow procedures. And it goes through a process, and they dwindle them down to the ones that make it through all the processes, and that comes out in this booklet. And there are typically about 18 of them, sometimes 12. And if they don't meet the criterion, then on the delegate meeting during the school board conference, they're not voted on. They just, they didn't meet the criterion, so they're passed over. As a board, every school board gets one vote. So the city of Chicago is a single district, and they have over 100,000 kids. They get one vote. There are over 800 districts in the state of Illinois. Typically, there are 400 representatives in that room. I have gone to about 13 of them for the last 13 years now. I will tell you that even though we are in the Chicago area, we think we're the largest and smartest, most sophisticated, or whatever that is, we are in the minority of the state of Illinois. The rest of the state does not think like we do. However, those resolutions belong to the board, not to me. I am just the person who goes and votes as the board directs, whether we'll support the Illinois Association of School Boards' recommendation or not. And even supporting their recommendation does not make it a resolution. That just means that the Illinois Association of School Boards will go to Springfield and lobby on behalf of that issue for school boards. That gives direction to ISAB what they should focus their time and energy on. And a perfect case, last year was in the news, you know, the news was there. There was a district in southern Illinois on the Kentucky border. They had one policeman for the entire county. So there was, oftentimes, the only one police car would be within 50 miles. There had been shooting across the border in Kentucky. So that school district sent the resolution. They had two ex-military in their district, and they said that they wanted... Can a district put in place policies, procedures, where they could have somebody who's armed on premise? And the Illinois Association always favors local control. They're always gonna, you know, in my 13 years, I've seen them, they always want a school board to have as much volition in their choice to say, "What's good for them?" There was heated discussion. In Chicago, we call police, it's like calling an Uber, you know? A policeman's there within 30 seconds. But if you're in some of these southern counties, you might not see a police for half a day. But the board directed me to vote against it, which I did. And it did not pass, it was very close. So those are the, rarely are things that heated. But that's how something would, you know, so it's not my opinion, it's this board's opinion. And I'm just the messenger. And, you know, so you'll get the packet and you'll read the rationale behind it. And my encouragement to this board would be, our experience is not everybody's experience. And so try and do, find out who, whatever the resolutions are, I have not read all of them yet. Try and find out what it's like to be in their shoes. And what are they truly asking for? What is their need? Because a lot of times, the needs in the southern schools, we can't even fathom that those are things that they don't have access to, so...
Mary Ann, you sent out the resolutions today, correct? And maybe what we should do as a discussion item, if you could put that resolution, the IASB resolutions on. This way, if any board member has a question or would like to discuss it with the whole board, they can do that with Laura before, you know, that's where it would take place, is at the Cow.
Do we have time for the November Cow? When is the November, oh, we don't have November.
There's not a November Cow.
So it'd have to be the October Cow?
Yeah, and she sent out the resolutions today, so that gives board members two weeks to look at them.
Yeah.
And if there's no discussion or no specific direction for Laura, then Laura can, you know, reflect what she believes to be the board's views. But if not, this would, that would be a good time to discuss or touch on some of these.
So the Illinois Association of School Boards will make a recommendation. And, you know, unless the board, do you want to support them or not?
So I took a quick look at those earlier today, and I think there's about probably 15 or 20 or something like that. Will we make a decision on every single one? Or Kevin, are you saying we're only...
Past practice time has not been that we discussed every single one. It was only ones that the board brought up that they would like to discuss. There's a few that you would like to discuss, you could bring them up. If someone has others, I think that would probably work best that we're not. Otherwise, if there's no, if there's nothing brought up from the board on a specific resolution, I would think that Laura would support the IASB's recommendation.
So oftentimes, the board will look at it just because you're new and it's the first time seeing it. They'll say, you know, they'll see where the Illinois Association of School Boards recommends you support it. And if the board's, the board will be like, "Well, I agree with that." And that's kind of like, "Well, we agree, you know, for these five, we agree with their recommendation." And so there's no discussion on it because they just agree with it. And so then you'll pull out the other ones that you want more information or you'd want to feel how the other board members feel.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And sometimes we like to discuss it so that everybody knows their view, also.
That was particularly with the last one.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we all agree, we all...
Well, we didn't all agree, but the majority vote.
The majority.
I mean, I would have supported the district, but that, and just to let you know, as your delegate, it's not my vote. I would have supported that district, but the board wanted us to not support it, and so that's how I voted, for the board, as your representative.
And then a motion of consideration for future...
Consideration for future meetings.
So Mary Ann, one of the items under, that would be the IASB resolutions. Was there any other ones?
For discussion? Yeah, 32nd. We got the two-week notice for the West Cook. So if anybody wants to attend the West Cook dinner meeting in October, we'll need to let Mary Ann know today.
It's the day of the Cow meeting.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of. I was hoping it was the 5th, but it's not, okay.
All right, closed, motion for closed?
Yeah, here we go. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
A second?
Second.
Durkin, and all in favor?
Aye.
You have to do a roll call.
You have to do a roll call.
All right, excuse me.
Yes.
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 One minute.
Let's adjourn.